So call the meeting of the Acton School Committee, October 14th, 2014, to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm going to request a very brief executive session after the meeting.
I think there's one on the...
There'll be two.
Okay, there'll be two, okay.
It's Section 11.
Section 11, yeah. Okay, any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, then let's move on with the approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 14th, 2014.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of October 14th with the addition of those who were present, Joy Kylie should be mentioned.
Okay, it's been moved later second, second and second by Diana. Any discussion over the minutes? All those in favor? So moved. Any comments from the public? Quiet public tonight. Any communication and correspondence?
Yeah, there's one item here. We have a staff member that is requesting maternity leave, and this is just to notify you if you'd like to see a piece from her. There it is. And she has the time and etc.
Why don't we just act on this right now while we're on communications? Someone want to make a motion to approve Brenner's maternity leave request for March 19th through May 14th?
I'll make that motion for the request from Brenner Whitney for March 19th till May 14th.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Besides congratulations must be in order.
Yes.
Definitely, congratulations.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, let's move on then to the superintendent's report.
Let's see, I've written the report. Got a few items on it this month compared to last month. We've been pretty busy, I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. Item four, I put David's name instead of Kevin, that needs to be addressed. Like to say, I met with Bernie Flynn, the director of Kirkham at Sanford, and the primary focus was to understand where they're going with the guides to standards and standards reporting, etc. It's been a good discussion. And she commented, I'm meeting tomorrow with David, student tenant, we've got some other stuff, and this will also come up. But it was also mentioned that they extend to the Acton Community School, anybody who wants to attend any of their professional development that's linked to their content area. And I think David has attended or he's going to be attending...
David attended on Monday, Tracy attended a few weeks ago.
Right, and they felt that Ms. Gully's contributions were really good for them. So it worked out good for both of us. The next thing, policy review is well underway, Kim will probably speak to that. That's a big job. We have a plan, no? Number seven, administrative roles, we've begun to have some role clarity that's taking place with the guides to that, and it'll be part of a future discussion as part of the December thing going into budget, okay? Teaching staff, since October 1st, I've been in all the classrooms for some multiple times, some not very long, 15, 20 minutes, sometimes longer. I did get locked down in one classroom during lockdown last week, which was interesting. And so I didn't get to see what had happened on the outside, but Trish will talk about that. Big work lately has been on number 10, the crisis plan, and if things go as, I'm hoping we should have a pretty close to a final draft hopefully next Friday. Working on the appendices part of it, we'll talk about that at another time. Then down under school and curriculum, you'll notice that Trish, we're talking about academic reporting that's taken place, but we've had to actually take a step back on some of the process since I got here because it appeared that we kind of had maybe a little bit of the cart before the horse. Ducks aren't lined up quite right, dominos, if you will, lined them out right. So we're going to take the time that needs to be done so that we can make sure it's a nice succinct and complete plan. On that, I've also included in your packet, or asked to be included packet, a reading presented by Lisa DeWitt with the guides to pre-K because that's going to be part of the discussion going into the budget for next year. And I would really like if you could read that, that's the beginning of an action plan, but there's more data going to come next month regarding the pre-K potential options. And evaluation committee, Trish, are you going to speak on that or not?
No, you can talk about the committee.
The committee has been meeting, we're going to meet again tomorrow, but there's a couple of things we've got to make sure that are done. Not certain on a couple of things that's supposed to have been done, signed, and voted on by the staff, I'm going to verify that tomorrow at that meeting. But in the meantime, we're going forward in some of the training, and we had Trish, Rachel, Driscoll, and Mark Noel to attend a eye observation Marzano training Monday in Demer Scotta. And that should help with the committee work moving forward on that front. And then the last one is data. I've got employee data and student data. There's been a review of the data of our employee files, making sure that we have current evaluations, current etc. items that should be part of the file. Some of those concerns have been taken care of or addressed. And student data, as we go forward down in the future, we need to be able to access student data in such a way that we can ask probing questions of where the students are at. And so you need someone on staff that has the ability to take data and manipulate it in the sense of if a person asks a question of it, they can create a graph or a chart or something. And at this point, I've asked Kim if you would begin to work on that, and then we're going to cross train someone else onto that. So that, this will tie into the long range plan down the road. Because right now, I can't even, one of the things I wanted to know is, okay, I want to see all the kids in second grade, what they got for grades? Can't get it. Have to go through every file. Things like that shouldn't happen in this day and age, you know, we should be able to see performance or whatever. So we're going to address that going forward. And that pretty much sums it up. Just double check. Nope, that's it. Any questions?
You've been busy.
We've all been busy.
Anybody have any questions for Bob? Definitely moving in the right direction in many areas, and that's very encouraging. Thank you. Progress monitoring reports, did you cover that? How that's going to be done? Or is there anything else under that?
Well, we've given you the benchmarks. NWA testing is just about complete, a few absentees, and we'll be able to get that at the next meeting. But also now the state has shifted our whole school from kneecaps to smarter balance, and that will be now a spring report, or post-spring.
So that's a state mandate then, huh?
Yeah, there always has been a state test, we just changed the tool.
Okay, strategic plan updates?
Nothing.
Let's move on to administrative reports, and we'll start with Trisha.
Okay, again, I'll highlight a few things in my report. You know, the big thank you for the PTG and Andy's installing the new projector screen. I don't know if it's almost like three times the size of the original one. It's crazy, but it's wonderful for the kids when we're doing assemblies. December 20th will be a holiday night again, movie night for PTG, and so there'll be no question that the kids will be able to enjoy themselves. First time it rolled up, it was awesome to hear the kids as they watched it automatically go up. It's the little things. So that was great. The Mammal Conference is the main association of middle-level educators. Again, this is geared towards sixth through eighth grade. So the team minus one ill teacher, myself, including even Pam, the special ed teacher at that grade level, went to the two-day conference. It was one of those kinds of conferences where there were certain times when we were all together, heard a keynote speaker, heard about, you know, middle-level education in general terms, and then you could also then do breakout sessions. And so the teachers and I enjoyed going and learning from other people in the state, what they're doing, what's new, what's tried and true, how they're adjusting to things like we are with the, we went to several sessions, myself and Mark and a few others, on the evaluation process, on standards, on how they're addressing things in the classroom, but also how students are still getting experiential learning, which I think is still a vital part of our kids' education, that we don't want to let the standards drop that hands-on learning. And so how they're doing it, how other schools are doing it, what's working. So some great networking with that. So then, I wrote this, I realize it was almost two weeks ago now, I got substitutes for teachers that are on the Science Vertical Team, so giving them an all-day workshop in-house to work on curriculum and alignment. Big thing going on is the report cards, as Bob has mentioned. We are trying to go at a pace that is reasonable. The hardest part is that we know where we want to be, but putting those things in order and aligning the K to eight. So I'm inviting parents to come next Tuesday night here so I can share with them what their report card for their students will look like, so they can ask some of those initial questions. But it'll be the first time in a very long time that the kindergarten through eighth grade report card will look the same. And it is highly dependent on quality comments and follow-up with parent conferences. So in order to really understand where your child is, you're not going to be able to just look at a number or look at a checkbox and consider it done. It really is going to communicate what the child is learning in that classroom and how the child is doing against what is being taught. So we're excited about that, but it's also frustrating, and I got to give kudos to Mike with working with us and working with the staff. Even this afternoon, he held a mini-training session on using the tool correctly. So we're using Empower through Educate at its simplest form. I've likened this in the past to using a smartphone. No matter how smart the phone is, the first thing you want to learn is, how do I turn it on? And how do I call somebody? So you sometimes have to start with the basics, even though the tool itself may have many capabilities. We're trying to work at a pace that is manageable by the teachers, but also, again, the number one thing is to communicate with parents how a student is doing. The square one R, if you even look on our website, you'll see the advertisement there. We've done this every other year for a couple of years now. This bulletin board out there, advertising the products, students have now had their artwork shipped off. And pretty soon you'll be getting information about how to order anything from a pot holder to a magnet to a keypad to a coffee mug with student work on it. So parents, aunts, grandparents, we want everybody to support this endeavor. It is really quality work that comes back. These products are actually stunning. And again, having it as your own child's artwork is just that much more special. Crisis action meetings, you know, as Bob said, we're having these meetings more often. We are trying to get the finite details of everything done, imagining the unimaginable and then working through. Again, using Deputy Sheriff Jason Solomon as an advisor. He is the SRO over in Massa VSC. Acton Rec, as you can hear, has begun basketball, boys and girls for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade have, mostly seventh and eighth grade, but I think there's some sixth graders on both, have started their practices. And I put in my memorable moments, the Scholastic Book Fair was a huge success, nearly $3,000 worth in sales. Jen Goodman did a great job encouraging students, teachers, and community to purchase books. So it was great. Any questions? Yes?
This isn't related to the report. This is just because I've been getting some questions in town from people about the lockdown and how the kids in the kindergarten and third grade wing were a little bit longer. I didn't know if you could just address that for people.
There was a communication error that resulted in the change, so that we no longer announce over the loudspeaker, the door-to-door release, if you will, of letting students know that the lockdown practice is over. There was a communication glitch, so it will never happen again. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Sounds good. Let me see, the school teams are up and running too, basketball?
They are.
With Ryan and Brenner?
Yes, we have our new phys ed teacher at our basketball. And again, for those of us that, when we were first getting to know who Ryan was, his talent in basketball is phenomenal. So, you know, the kids are really in good hands.
I'd like to just comment and thank, this is a good one for her $1,500 profit.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Jen. Okay, then let's go to Joy, please.
Special education programming. The main department of ed has ruled out a new format for the IEP, and we are now in the transition process of using that, utilizing that. The format, the new IEP is much more user-friendly. There's less of the procedural information on the IEP, it's more in the parental safeguards, the law that we handle, you know, the regulations we hand out, so that it's less cluttered and it just appears better and, as I said, more consumer-friendly, so the parents are understanding it better. The special education reporting, the EFS-05 Part 1 Child Count was submitted in October, as was the special education personnel contracted, employed, contracted, needed. So there, Part 1 and Part 2, so I'll just share with you that the enrollment information that I gave you is not all what was submitted as part of that report. Only the last column, which is October of 2014. So that was what was submitted this year. The rest, I just wanted to put that in there as a comparison, so that you see from 2012 the number of students, and you see in 2013 we had a jump. And I'd like to note that we have students being discharged and also students sort of in the process, if you will. So that number is always fluctuating, just as the enrollment numbers are. But for us, during the school year, it fluctuates more because, as I said, we're discharging, and right now we're in the process of testing three or four students. But it's pretty typical of the school year. And then you can see that, how it breaks down in terms of the disability. For our personnel, we have three special ed tutors, and of course, you all know that we have one out on medical leave, so we're trying to cover that. We have eight special ed technicians and four contracted service providers, speech and language at 60 percent, occupational therapist at 65 percent. And she also provides a lot of response to intervention. She's in the kindergartens, so she supports a lot of regular ed students as they are in the process, as we're trying to determine the need or their needs. And then we have a physical therapist who is here basically one day a week, and our school psychologist works roughly 12 hours, so 30 percent. And program monitoring, the audit, as you know, we have the audit that was conducted in October of last year, it started, March was the actual onsite visit, so it's been kind of a long process. I am now in the final stages of compiling all the information for the corrective action plan, and we were very fortunate that our plan was not too lengthy. We had some technical, I guess, paperwork issues, nothing in programming. And some of those technical bindings were things that they were requiring at the time, that was a new requirement. So we have made those changes. And I've done a lot of training during our department meetings all last year and again this year around, you know, the written prior notice that we have to give, the advance notice, there are so many components to that as there are in the IEP. So we need to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements. So that, and our staff has been updated, our teachers and contracted personnel have been updated as to what they need, and we're submitting those corrections, if you will. There are new IEPs that have been written to show, demonstrate that we have complied. So we're in the final stages of that, and we have until November 30th to submit all of the documentation. And so we're well in the timeline. And I believe that is it for my report.
What about the behavioral specialist? Is that one of these four?
No, she's a consultant, and I can certainly add that she comes twice a month. So she's, she wasn't in this report, so.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, I just wondered if she...
She's still working with us.
Okay.
She was here today, actually.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask, because you said you have one of the special ed teachers that's currently out on medical leave, and I was just wondering how that's being divided up, like...
Well, you know, we've, I guess to answer that question, it's been a little bit of a struggle. We've had a very great, wonderful sub in there, but struggling in terms of covering everything. But we feel we've managed that pretty well, that the IEP needs for the most part have been met. Again, because of the confidentiality, it's hard to talk about the future, but we have the two, at this point, the two special ed case managers covering, as well as myself covering, the compliance of the IEPs. We have, you know, the ed techs and also the teachers, and we had, we were lucky enough to have Pat Reeves, who is beyond compare and certainly provided the instruction that needed to happen. So we're really fortunate in that. She's not with us right now, but we're working to make accommodations with the present staff that we have.
So you wouldn't be looking to like have a long, permanently long-term sub until that person can come back?
Well, we have tried that. We have had no applicants. One applicant we did have, I should say, we had an applicant who then took a permanent job. So no other qualified applicants applied, and so we had to make adjustments because we have advertised, correct, Kim? We've advertised at length.
We actually got two of them recently.
Oh, we did, okay.
How many students is one special ed teacher allowed to have?
There's, well, I mean...
Is that by law, you know, they can't have more than 20 or something?
I'm so sorry. Thought this was all, I apologize.
Is there a set number?
There, I mean, there are recommended numbers, and the recommendation is that no more than 20 because of the teaching aspect of what, you know, what the case managers are required to do.
Well, I'm just looking, you know, we have, what, 19 K to four, no, did I end this right? 19, and then 21, five through eight. So it looks like we only need two special ed teachers when I look at the numbers, but I don't know, you know, the disabilities, I guess.
Some of them are very, students have very high need. We also like to have a special ed teacher attached to the grade level to provide the support at each, the grade span, so K-2, grades 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8. That supports the proficiency-based learning expectations that we are, you know, we are looking at, because we thought about that, reducing. But it's really, I mean, the requirements, remember, our special ed teachers are writing IEPs that are, where the goals are aligned to the standards, and they're also teaching. And, you know, one of the things that we did last year was to eliminate the special ed secretary to reduce, to meet the lower enrollment. And my feeling was, and I think the rest of us felt, that the teaching, the student, those directly working with students having the most impact should be maintained.
Right, but then, you know, I look at speech and language, and there's 13, and then we have the contracted speech and language person who probably deals mostly with that, so that's 13. I'm just, you know, with the lower numbers, I'm just wondering, do we need three, is really what I'm getting at.
Well, we're certainly, certainly going to be looking at that. I think that's a question for Trish, Bob, myself.
How many of the...
Except that number you're looking at the bottom, that's kind of, Ms. Lee, that's K-12, best services.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if you add it up, it's roughly 57, so some of those are high school.
And you have 19 identified, grade 6 through 8.
Well, how much do we pay the Sanford High School? We have a contract with them to pay them for our 9 through 12. How much is that?
We talked to them about that, but they have, they never did bill us for anything. But they have been in charge of our high school kids. But we, I think, you know, we had, we had made a deal with them at one time, way back when.
Some I missed to talk about.
So, yeah. They haven't, but once we stop paying tuition for them, then I think that becomes a part of their responsibility. We follow them, but it should be their responsibility once they get, once we're paying tuition for them to go to Sanford.
Okay.
Of the special education technicians, is there, how many of them are, maybe, I don't understand fully, but do some of those have to do one-on-ones based upon IEP?
Just one.
So one of those, so one of the eight is a dedicated one-on-one where the other seven are sort of more...
Yes, it's support. Support many more students.
For the classrooms, yeah, okay.
Again, we'll be discussing that as part of the budget planning.
One other thought, too, I have moving forward, I know throughout the year when we look at data, and I think we do this sometimes too, but it's just because it's on my brain now, I appreciate information like this. There's a lot about this school, I still learn every single time, so these kind, this kind of information I find helpful. The thing, if you're moving forward, when we start looking at some of the achievement data, knowing the importance of the subgroups in special education, just want to, a reminder, really want to see how this cohort, these students are doing when we look at data.
Well, and I think you said it better, Kevin, than I did, that that's the purpose for the three special ed teachers, of course, that would be, that will be discussed, but the expectations are great. Proficiency-based learning is, they're required to meet that standard, and we really want to make sure that they get the direct instruction, those special ed students, as well as be in the classroom, so that it's double-dosing them. Otherwise, they're not going to bridge the gap. They have to bridge that gap. So that's, you know, it's really about the education in the classroom and the direct instruction. Those two pieces are critically important.
Diana? I just wanted to piggyback off what Kevin said, that I really appreciate seeing the data as well, especially the broken down by disabilities as well. It's really very helpful, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Joy? All right, then let's go on to Kim's report, please.
As we discussed last month, we have the fund balance policy, and in this packet you have the revised one, which we'll talk about later. With regards to policies, I submitted basically a breakdown of how I'm doing the policy reviews. Basically, I'm taking all the policies we have currently, went, compared it with MSMA, with what was required, realized all the ones that were missing, so now I have a notebook of all the missing ones, and now... And now I'm taking all those and compiling them in four different groups. So you'll have a group where you'll just review them. You'll have a group where you have minor changes. You'll have a group where you have substantial change, and then your new drafts. And each one of those subgroups are divided by, there's like eight categories, you know, like board governance or foundations and commitments or students. So it'll all be segregated that way, so that way we can keep them all in line. So as soon as, we should have all of that done before December 3rd, so, and then I'll submit it to Bob and he'll let you guys go at it.
For Christmas.
Well, the intent, the intent is to, like you say, the ones that just need to be, you're quick, most good move. Then one or two new ones that need to be addressed as first reads each time, so we chip away at the mountain.
It's a, is one of those categories.
A, B, C, D.
Sorry. Is one of those categories the policies related to proficiency-based learning in LD1422?
It will be.
It will be. I do have those as.
But I'd like to prioritize those.
That's, after that, this review, that's the next thing, is Brad Tracy's newest.
Yeah.
So we'll get it all done. Okay.
One other, so one other thing, just because I know sometimes they can be a little slow, just because of the nature of the game. Have we requested any, I know some of the districts I'm working with, MSMA do have sample policies for a lot of the proficiency-based learning ones that a lot of districts don't have. Have we requested those samples?
Have we got?
That's the packet we got. The instruction was, what do we currently have? What's the state we need to have? And what's the MSA?
So we do have the MSA bump too?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I understand. So awesome. Thanks.
Yeah, like, so the notebook that I got from MSA of all the new ones.
Yeah, no, they have a couple on their website, but they're like, if you want more, ask us.
No, I asked. I asked specifically for all of them.
You're doing a great job.
She sent it to me in multiple files.
Yeah, and it'll be nice too, to just, as we go through them all, to say that they were reviewed at a certain date, so we'll know what we've looked at. And there won't be something we'll look at that will be like 1990 something.
Yeah, right.
You know, so.
What I've done.
And they'll all be online too.
Right. Because what I've done is I've completed a spreadsheet of all of them with when they were first adopted.
Oh, you did that already?
When they were deleted.
Yes. We're very happy.
Kudos. Kudos for that. Kudos, kudos from the board.
Yes.
I looked at that binder the other night and it was like a shit.
Scary, isn't it?
The goal, the goal will be to definitely, I'd say by the end of the year, to have the bulk of that done. And then focus on the ones that are critical to driving education.
Excellent. So that was one thing. The, we also started our budgetary season.
Ten times.
And I've met with a few already on their individual budgets. I've taken them article by article. And I basically sit down and give them the last two years of data. And we sit down and also look at their needs that they have for coming for this year. And then as a large group, we will all come together and review all the budgets before. And then Bob will compile everything and we'll do our first medal come in January. Basically, I did an outline of the budget process. And so we started in January and then start reviewing all the details of each article in February, March, having hopefully the whole budget finalized by March 17th. Then have that budget reviewed by the Warren and Finance Committee by March 24. Have the public hearing scheduled for April 21st, and then the town vote scheduled for April 28th.
Now, did you look at that? And if it doesn't pass?
Correct.
Can we get to the June town meeting to, timing works.
And does the public, the public hearing, does that come in April vacation again this year?
No.
Because that's.
Let me tell you, that's a deadly one when it happens.
I think you're right.
Two years in a row and it's not, let me tell you.
Yeah.
Vacations the 20th to 24th.
No, week after.
Oh, good.
Yeah, week after.
28th, yeah, just that.
Yeah, because last year we had a lot of parents.
No.
When is school vacation?
Yeah, when is school vacation?
28th to the 24th.
Yeah, so the public hearing is during vacation.
Right, the 21st.
No, but the vote is the 28th.
Doesn't matter. 21st is the most important part.
The 13 people that show up. Vote on the budget.
So you want to vote that week?
Public hearing.
I mean, I'm more worried about it being on the 28th.
Well, that's true.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's the voting.
That's true.
I'm less worried on the 20th to the 24th because it's still.
I know, but it'd be nice to get public at the public hearing.
I agree.
The reality is that there's very few parents that show up to that. The reality is, to change all that would be.
Well, if we had the public hearing.
The week before?
The week before on the 13th and still keep.
Can you? I don't, there's also a timeframe there.
You'd have to check with Jim Rue, but there is a time, there is a time limit in there. Or maybe it's, it can't be any less than, can't be any less than seven days. Whether it can be more than seven days.
That'd be nice to find out. If it could be the week before, that'd be great.
Well, the week before on the 14th of April is a regular school committee meeting. So can we integrate all that the same night?
Yes, good, 4 o'clock meeting.
No, I'm just saying that we have to have.
It's the same group of people. There's no reason why not.
We did that last year. I think we did that last year.
Just make it all the same night.
But during vacation hamstrings us a little bit. It hamstrings the process.
Pardon me?
Well, if it's okay, it does, I mean, because that's.
It's good to find out.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. That's like almost 14 days between working on them both.
February break, Saturday is the 18th?
Yeah.
Sunday, the 19th?
No, 16th to the 20th is the February.
Okay, so we're not, we don't have an issue yet. That's.
Sorry.
So, so this, the 21st does come in, in April vacation, is that what you're saying?
April 21st does, yes.
We have the holidays. That doesn't, that can't happen.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. The public hearing could be.
On the secondary education.
Oh, no, it's the second, it's the Tuesday, that's right.
Where?
No, March 10th. Is that generally a long discussion?
Do you need a public hearing? Secondary education?
March 10th.
Right, but we also need to probably review everything. You know, if something needed to be, yeah.
I see what you're doing. Yeah, move that up one.
Were you looking, were you seeing March 10th?
Move that up to March 3rd.
This budget preparation timeline.
She passed out a form.
Separate, separate form.
Combined them before.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we find out from Jennifer that we don't have to have it during a certain timeframe, it would be, makes sense to move the secondary education Article 3 up to the March 3rd one because that really doesn't take a lot of time. And then we can move.
We need the review one though.
Move everything.
In case we need to discuss.
Yeah, well, that would be March, that would just be the next one where the budget's finalized. That's the review, would it not be?
Yeah, the March 10th one's usually a longer conversation than that.
Yeah, you have a lot of comment from the public sometimes when they're looking at specific articles.
Yeah.
Well, let's see.
You know, because say, you know, we want to talk about, you know, library, for instance. And we don't get to finish on February 10th. We could say March 10th, we'll just finish discussing the library.
Yeah, right.
You know what I mean? It's to leave it open for.
Yeah, we'll leave all the articles open for discussion.
Yeah, that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
So we might be trying to move the 21st?
Yeah. Said I'll give Jennifer a call tomorrow and then.
Just the time.
We don't want to change, we don't want to change the 28th.
No, it's good.
No, I want to leave the 28th because then you've got enough time if you have to jump on in on the June one, so.
Yeah, I think the minimum is 70s, but there's no maximum.
I think you could probably do it in weeks. But I will double check with Jennifer tomorrow and then I'll let everybody.
And then the posting will change.
If it's, I mean, we could conceivably, we're going to have it on a, if the days are less, we could move it to later in the week. It wouldn't have to be on a Tuesday necessarily. We could have the meeting on a Thursday or something like that if we needed to, to fix the days.
Yeah.
Whatever works.
Yeah, I'll ask Jennifer which way if it's Tuesday or expanding.
Okay.
So that's, so that's gonna, that's gonna be coming up too. Crystal and I attended one seminar for Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, which helped us because then we could jump things and do things online versus the paper drill we were doing. And then Bob and I went on a law seminar for, from Drummond and Woodson. And having an understanding of how the Affordable Care Act is going to affect us, how, you know, employee leave issues and school finance show, show really good. It was their first one of that type and it was very informative. There's another one coming up in December on contract bargaining procedures, so we thought we might take that one too.
The cost of that seminar, this seminar she's talking about, we got back in legal advice on some other issues while we were there.
Yeah, while we were here.
More than compensated for.
Very, that's what we go for.
So those were.
High values.
And basically, again, your general and your grant funding numbers are in your report. And if you've got any questions.
Is there any, looking at the revenue and expenditures? I'm just curious in regards to, because you've got the year-to-date actual what we spent and then what's remaining in the budget actual column, correct? That's where I'm reading it?
Mm-hmm.
Just, is there any that were not where we should be, like we're over, we're over where we should be, sort of like?
The overrender?
Correct.
Yeah. Basically, if anything is close, it would be Article 7, which is system administration. That's actually the highest percentage and it's.
Why we would be over there?
Legal expenses.
Okay.
I can give you percentages next to these numbers if you would like.
I'm going to request that next time.
That'd be great, because it'd be nice to sort of see where we're.
Percentage of the school year and then the percentage to, she provides that report to me.
Okay, that'd be great.
And I did a quick check on that, I don't know, it was last Friday or whatever. We were like, I mean, just a two or three percent of where we were in the number of percent of school days. It was except for the supplies, which always are front heavy.
Right.
So everything looked good. But we should include, I think, the percentage.
And I can.
That'd be great.
The only, and, and operation maintenance might, that number might seem a little high, but it's because Andy's encumbered quite a bit, especially like in fuel.
Which you have to do.
So that encumbrance number is in there. So just, it's not like he's spent it, but it's encumbered for the year.
Makes sense.
And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Well, thank you.
It's nice to have the budget timeline already.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
To find the glitches now.
And.
Yes.
Want to see the figures and know where we are. Anybody have any other questions or comments for Kim? Okay, let's go to Andy.
All right, mine will be pretty great tonight, I hope.
Almost is.
Building out back, the one remaining item that needed to be done on it was the roof and that has been completed this month. The irrigation system has been prepped for winter. Met with Portland Glass two weeks ago to obtain an estimate for replacing the windows in the 57 and 78 wing. That's kind of a long-term planning item that we have discussed that I wanted to get a number to see how much it was going to be, to see if it's something that might be done in phases or if it's something that might be budgeted for capital improvement in the next few years. The hot water heater required a fairly substantial repair this month. Also, one circulator pump in the primary wing was replaced. As Bob and Trish have both mentioned in their reports, I've been working and attending the emergency planning meetings, preparing for winter, servicing the equipment and getting the ice melt products stocked. And then the last item on my report tonight was during this past month, we had some heavy rains and one of the skylights leaked. And upon further inspection, the caulking on all of them were pretty deteriorated. So I took care of recaulking all of them and they should be all set for a long time. And the rest of my reporting will be taken up under the long-term planning.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Andy?
The circulator pump, was that something planned on or was that something that failed?
Regular maintenance item. And that was actually an inexpensive fix. It was only about 130 bucks.
So you don't plan on having to go up in the pouring rain again to fix the skylights right away? Thank you, Andy. Michael?
My report's really good. The view is, they are complete, maybe one makeup to be done. Once the windows close, I'll have, all the reports are processed and available for the teachers to look at. But the big Excel data that you like to see won't be processed until I close the testing window this week. And I'd like to give Gail Boyver a big shout-out and kudos for managing and maintaining the testing. She did most of the testing, operates most of it, gets everything set up in the computer lab, you know, preps the tests, make sure the kids are set up in the appropriate seats. And being the first year, we did kindergarten, first grade and second grade using a special primary test that reads the whole test and questions and answers to them and finding it to be very buggy and glitchy. I'm just so impressed at her patience and the teachers' patience and the students' patience with that software and dealing with it. They did a great job and everything went smoothly once we saw the glitches and we knew what to expect. So, yeah, I give a great kudos to Gail and a great appreciation for all the work she did. And as mentioned, the proficiency-based reporting and report cards. I hosted a training this afternoon before the meeting to give the teachers an overview on the procedures and how to input what data we want to report on this trimester. As both Bob and Trish had mentioned, we took a step back to analyze what we want to report on and how we want to report on it. So we're going to continue that process. And I'm going to work with the teachers and the software to get what we need out to the parents so the communication is clear. And besides all of the crisis work we've been doing and we've just been, we've been really busy as a team and as a school just trying to pull all the pieces together and get everything in place. So good work to everybody.
Thank you.
Would you comment on also our looking at other software in the matrix?
Okay. With the proficiency-based software we took in the Educate software, the Empower software, we initially started with, we stepped, as we stepped back to look at, you know, what we're reporting on, how we're going to report on it. We took the time to actually demonstrate other software solutions out there. Jump rope, one, Mastery Connect, the other. And we're trying to find the solution that's going to best fit our needs as a whole. So that is something that still needs to be discussed and decided on. But we have taken the research, you know, step to find out what that would be.
And this actually goes back to eventually curriculum and long-term planning, because we need to make sure that, one, we value the work that the staff has already done, and is, is the work that you've been doing and unpacking really aligned well with the current proposed solution or not. And so that's why, so that's, we're gonna be able to come to you and say, yes, we feel really good about this particular direction, once we know that the curriculum lined up. I felt the current direction was not supporting a lot of the efforts that the staff have already done. I don't see it matching, and so let's, let's really look over and see if something else has a better match for where the work they've already done, so we value the work. That's kind of where it's going.
I have a question for you, in terms of, you said, comment-only reports. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that really means for parents? And, because you have kindergarten through fifth grade.
Yeah, initially, that, that, it's actually going to be K through A. When I set that out, it was before we had come up with a, a solid solution to unify the report card in Empower. Because initially it was gonna be sixth grade, we're gonna continue to use Nippon Campus.
Let me jump in. What we're talking about is K through five already has had the standards reported out on, what they're doing. And they haven't had a letter grade or a numerical grade to go with it. That is continuing. These, the, the, the only real difference you're gonna notice is that rather than each standard spelled out, and K two having one style of report card and three-five having another, you're gonna see that information all in a comment style. So it'll be a paragraph of each.
Per content.
For, for, for the content area, so English Language Arts will have, we've worked on these standards, your child is doing this well. When you get to the sixth, seventh and eighth grade, in addition to that, you will still have a letter grade. So that, you know, that your child's getting a B minus in math, he has been taught these standards, he is doing this well on it. And again, it's really gonna be important that parents go to the conferences and have those direct dialogues. But that's also why, there'll be a letter going home to parents explaining this. I'm making myself available ahead of time to talk to parents about this. I've gone to P T G with this information, and I will go again. But also, you know, I think it's just really important, I think when you see it spelled out about your child, what they've learned, it's not gonna be dramatic, but I'm, I'm, we're really hoping it's gonna be very clear. And like I said, every subject, so art will have comments, you know, P E will have comments, but every single subject will be in a more paragraph style, rather than a bunch of boxes checked off with a one, two, three, four.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a permanent solution, it's the beginning of consistency over time. Because you can't report currently on every standard, because that structure isn't in place. So how do we communicate what they have been doing? But more importantly, at the conferences, the teacher has the support documentation on each of those standards, so they can say, this is why I have this comment. Because these, this is where the kids, let's look at.
Can we collect data, Kevin, on this?
Not yet.
If it's just comments.
We're, we're headed there.
I'm waiting for data man.
I'm, 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 I'm raining it in. The one thing I find, I just, maybe just to throw out an idea in this, and just knowing the conversations I've, as a parent, have found most helpful. Because I'm liking this movement towards more narrative, evidence-based.
Right.
Reporting and that sort of thing. Like a good example, I remember one of the first report cards my daughter had, this is a few, this is I think when she was in first grade, it was like writing, and she got an eleven. I had no idea what that means.
Right.
What I've found in the past, the most helpful, and if there's a way to sort of scale this up or replicate this, is particularly in the parent, the student-teacher conferences. Well, one, I'd love to have a conversation about having, and this I see as a policy thing, is student-led conferences. I would really like to see the students start to be sort of taking ownership of the conferences, but that's a, that's a, that's a policy practice thing. But where the teacher says, this is the work that the students have been doing, particularly if we're moving towards meets, I wanna see meets. Then I wanna see my daughter's work, so I can compare and see the difference, because it's really hard to understand where my child is if I don't have the benchmark. So particularly, in those conversations, so much easier in the sense of, your child's doing great, doesn't mean as much where, this is what we're trying to teach them how to do, here's good work, here's your child's work. Suddenly, I don't need an explanation, because I can see it.
And I think that's true for the students themselves.
Absolutely.
How do they know they're hitting a target when they're, when they're blanketed? So they need to have that target as clear as the parents do.
Well, I have to say, I disagree with student-led conferences, because I've been through that transition, and it doesn't work. I'm sorry, the kids say they're doing wonderful, they're whatever, and I'd rather just hear from the teacher, the actual reporting.
We should talk about them, there's, there's models out there that haven't worked, and there's models that.
Just saying.
My experience with student-led conferences is, the student is present at the conference, and he explains, he or she explained what they've done and how they got there.
Yeah, and then I can't talk to the teacher about what's actually happening, so that's the problem. I've seen it, I've done it.
Both do.
It's craziness, yes, you can do two separate ones then, with the kid there, and then you say, leave the room, now let me talk to the teacher. Because in all honesty, you know, it's the whole, we don't wanna bully the kid, we don't wanna hurt their feelings, we don't, you know, so you can't, how do you say anything negative? And I'm just saying, it doesn't work. You sometimes gotta just talk to an adult and an adult, and the kid has to leave the room, and that's all I'll say. I'm cringing over here, Mary, we need to really talk more.
That sounds like a good conversation, there's, there's ways to do it poorly, but.
And there's ways to do it well.
That's right.
But in the shift towards standards, it will, will, the difference in the student-led with the standards world is you actually, and you have a software system that allows you to see this ahead of time. You're committing, you're already gonna have that body that's pre-imposed, so you can have a discussion.
Yeah.
That's the key. That's the difference that was lacking before.
And I'm not less of a fan of the, the student-led philosophy, there's like another facet, which is sort of student-involved.
Owning their education.
What?
Owning their education.
Yeah, and you need to have some space sometimes to have a private conversation, but the, the research is really, the more students have ownership of their learning, the higher they achieve, and it's, you've gotta do it right. And I think what you're describing is when it's done poorly, I agree with that, again, it can be done poorly. But it's, I, it's like I just said, I think it's a conversation that we could get to have.
Because I have to, I have to say though, having two children that, that go to this school, my oldest son, when he's been, the types of activities that hook him in class, he can go home and explain to us. And he remembers it from like two, three years ago, oh, remember when I did that? So he coaches his little brother, like, oh, this is what's coming up soon, watch out for it, but, or, this is something really cool, watch out for this. So I mean, it, the conversation, I'm looking forward to it.
But the, but the last piece is, the student involvement piece aside, if we're moving to proficiency, it's really essential for parents to know, and the kids too, obviously, what proficiency looks like. It's hard to have, it can be, it can be numbers, or it can be, Johnny is doing great, doesn't matter if I don't know what great looks like or what good looks like.
Okay, any other questions?
I have another one.
Did you have anything else, Michael? No?
Take note, it always triggers these other things. Do we have on the cal, the windows closing, you said this week for N U A?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
So when will we, do we have on the calendar when we will see the results of the, the, the data? On, on, on the reading, writing language, I mean, the reading language and that.
The data is already, like I, I mentioned, the data is already there, so at the next board meeting, we can have the Excel data, the, the.
I think it needs to be probably packaged for us a little bit, though.
Have you had it before?
We started having it more last year, so that's why I'm asking.
And was it packaged in a format that you liked, or a format that was useful, let's put it that way?
I think it was progress monitoring reports, we put that in.
Krista, Kristen had been, that was part of her reporting out.
Can I, can I just ask, like, the, what it, what has been reported out in the past, has it been like RIT scores or percentages, or what has been shared in the past?
Well, nothing really has been shared at the board level in the past. At the parent level and the teacher level, they look at the student's individual report, the RIT scores, comparison to growth or, or lack thereof. But at, at the board level.
Kristen, Kristen did.
Last, last year there was, there was, last year there was a data crunching workshop gathering.
Diane, I can get you a copy of that, since you worked here at this time last year, if that'll help you see what was.
Yeah, I don't, just, I'm just curious if it's broken down just by grade level, or by classes, or, so. I, I was just curious if you had like.
Actually, it was the first, I think, board presentation.
The first time.
Big data crunch.
What I think, I'm curious what others think, I, I think what's helpful is particularly given some of our strategic goals, by grade level, what percentage of students are exceeding, what percentage of students are at where they should be when you look at the, the, the norms. I know that's on one benchmark, but then particularly, how many students are behind and to what extent would love the special education population to be there as well. Because I think that's, and a good comparison is, and I think Andy's report is really great, we get a report every week, every month, about, this is what's not working, and this is what we're doing to fix it. And then if it's working, we hear about it, or we don't, we assume it's going well, but if it's not, we don't have the same parallel with the most important thing, which is the, sort of the student learning. Yeah.
You're actually headed there, if you just.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I'm going to do with, basically with the database.
I saw that on the, yeah.
That.
The database, the warehouse.
Kristen started, is, is basically I'm gonna take all the data from two thousand and seven on and, and combine it all in one large database by student ID number. So that way you can actually see how a student has progressed from year to year.
So we can ask those questions.
So once, because once I put the database together, then it's basically pivot tables and, yeah, and that way, when you ask those what-if questions, whether it's by classroom, whether it's by math, or reading, or whatever, you know, it, we can detail those questions, but right now it's all split up by spring and fall and by year.
Yeah.
And so what I'll be doing is combining them all together, and, and they'll all be sorted by, by student, by student ID. And then we'll, we can compile questions by grade levels, we can see how a grade level has progressed from the second grade to the third grade to the fourth grade, and that type of, you know, those scenarios, so we can see bell curves, or we can see.
Cool.
It is, it's gonna take me a little bit.
And there's a few roadblocks in that she's not aware of yet, but they have to be addressed, because versions, types of tests that were given.
There's different, you've got all these different data sources.
So there's some of that, but we'll also, I think we need to include the benchmarking, Fongis and Penel, because that's more critical for the K one, two. Because the data set for the kindergarten would be first-year data, kindergarten, and I actually went in and watched the kids and, you know, and then I talked to a couple of kids after. I said, so was that audio? Yeah, was it reading to you too? Because I mean, it's got pictures and it's got audio, and, and I wanna know how that experience was going for the kid and their experience. And it was new, but I talked to the teachers and they felt that, that the data's probably better good than bad. Meaning, even though there were some hiccups, it's probably better, more informative than bad, so, you know. And the other thing you need to know is, Newia is changing, the structure that they're currently using is a client-server-based model, and most places are shifting towards a complete web-based model, and the data will be much quicker turnaround and so forth, so there's some other things.
And from my explanation from N U A is that the data that we previously had wasn't aligned to the Common Core.
That's correct.
The current data is aligned to the Common Core, but they explained to me that the data is a smooth transition. So if we analyze the data for two thousand and seven, it will.
Transform into two thousand and eight.
Yeah, and the web-based testing is going to be basically the same questions and the same alignment to the Common Core as our current, it's just gonna be in a different delivery system or mechanism, so.
They did, Newia did some research comparing, because I had contacted Newia two years ago when we went to the Common Core version in the first year. And they said, well, we don't have enough test database yet to see, to norm it. So they did some statistical analysis and norming some school, and they felt that it was, as he just said, close. But they didn't wanna go out on a limb, in my opinion, and really state absolute, so I, I don't think it's exactly the same.
It's, yeah.
Gotcha.
And then there are many districts that are, I know, are considering to doing away with Newia once a smarter balance comes in, because that will be part of.
It'll be adaptive, and it'll be.
You can get it anytime you want.
Yeah.
I think that's still up for discussion. Newia's expensive, it is.
Yeah, just in close, so, and again, because I, I know this is one of the things I keep harping on, but I'm, I'm envisioning a day where our meetings, a good chunk of it is, we've got measurables each time we get together, and this is where we were, what improvement did we see from last month?
That was the progress monitoring.
I know, and it's, it's here.
We're getting there.
It's here, but it's still not here, so, but we're getting there, it's evolving, and I'm optimistic. I missed, I was, because I was late, but I assumed you talked about the strategic plan, the status of that.
The status, we have not done anything.
That there was no status.
We're working heavy on the crisis by the moment, to get that out of the way, but to me, that's some.
Safety first.
And it's gonna, it's gonna be a.
But it sounds like all of these things you're talking about, though, am I correct in assuming, will be part of the strategic plan?
That's correct.
So we're kind of working on it, it's just.
Stuck in pieces, yeah.
Yeah. So next month, we'll have N U A data.
Whether, it'll be in her hands, what she does with it.
But I think.
Don't let you feel any pressure or anything.
Fongis Penel?
You could have Fongis Penel now.
Is there any, yeah, a little data each week, I'd be, I'd be living my glory. Do we have, I know there was work, because of this, one of the goals we had last year was the writing piece, is there any baseline writing data? Because I know Tracy was working on.
Within the Fongis Penel, they are doing a writing piece, according to Lisa.
That is part of that benchmark, but they've also been working on, the literacy vertical team is working on the change, the eleven you talked about, about years ago, your daughter's score was an eleven.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's the writing.
That was the writing continuum, right, so I know what that meant, and that was good, eleven was.
I know it's good, but.
I could tell you that, I would've been happy with elevens in sixth grade. So, but they're changing the rubric again, because we're aligning with the Common Core, so that writing continuum is, is not updated enough to what we're teaching. So that work is definitely being done by the literacy vertical team to align it. So it seems like we have some things that you want an answer to, and we're almost there, almost there, almost there. But the, the staff is truly working, I mean, to have all these initiatives going on in education at the same time is quite intense. And they really are dedicating themselves to after-school meetings and, and teacher workshop times and, and asking, you know, they're, they're very brave. You know, they're asking for the time they need, and so we're granting it to them whenever we can. So you're gonna see a lot of this come together all at the same time. So it's exciting, but it's also exhausting. You know, but they really are, they're working hard on these things.
Well, basically, we're doing lots and lots of catching up in many different areas.
Yes, we are.
And so, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but we are catching up, getting pieces put in place and getting things that we've, we've been.
And we don't have as many Romans as the other empires.
I agree, not a day, and again, I.
I think we've got some pretty good ones.
I'm happy with what I'm hearing, but just, and to clarify, we've been waiting for a strategic plan for two years. So it's, we need a plan. But again, I know, I totally understand that's not being critical, but at some point, we do need a plan.
We'll get one.
I know, I know.
Okay.
We gotta get the pieces off.
But I have a motion, please, to accept all the administrative reports.
I move so.
Second.
All those in favor? So move. Okay, let's move on here. No celebration of mourning tonight, let's go to committee reports, and we'll go to the long-term planning committee.
Two main points to hit on from long-term planning tonight. One is the, the concrete walkways out front and out back are going to be a priority this year as far as capital improvement. I talked with Pat Stevens this week about getting a price, and depending on what that price is, I'll be coming back to you folks, potentially during budget season, to include that as a capital improvement project for this year. And then the second part of the long-term planning was based upon a number of security-related items as a result of the update of the emergency planning. It has generated a list of needs for the school as far as the security goes. And the administrative team will be prioritizing that list as we move forward. And at some point in time, the committee will see that there will be items up for discussion for the needs. And at some point in time, the committee will see that there will be items up for discussion for the needs.
There'll be a security, security and safety is the layout of what we need to consider to address over the next six years and how we might attack it.
Based on this, partly on this list.
Partly, oh, partly, yeah, and others. And Andy's done great work on it.
Glad you're doing that.
There was a, I don't know if everybody gets these seminar things on the school web link, but there was one on here about safety and security that's gonna be on tomorrow or something, a webinar, I think.
I think it's actually next week.
Okay, I thought it said the thirteenth, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'll forward it to you, Bob.
Okay. Is that it for long-term planning?
Yes.
I'm sure everybody will be happy if we get the holes in the concrete fixed. Policy committee, I think.
The only thing we can say there is when we're gonna meet, correct?
Well, I thought we were gonna meet on the second of December.
I was freaking out when I was driving down here, and I'm like, oh my gosh, I felt like we should've met already. And I'm like, oh my gosh, did I miss a meeting? And I was about to send an apology because I thought it was the end of October.
And the only thing is, one said at nine o'clock, and the other said at eight, so...
I don't care.
Whichever.
You pick it. It doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me. I told you guys four o'clock in the morning, but nobody...
That's a little...
But I don't care. You...
I'm happy to do it because I'll just take my daughter to school.
Okay.
That's selfish reasons.
Yep, okay. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yep, alright.
In fact, we've been talking that maybe to get further along at some point, we might just kinda have a hazy morning and just really...
Crank out.
Yeah, these ones that we know are just quick, and to get where we need to be a little quicker.
Yep.
We'll decide that at that meeting.
Sounds good.
You could just email us for comments, and then...
Well, we're gonna all have the bundle, correct? Kim's gonna make us each a...
So you don't need a meeting. You just need to email us, and then we respond.
I'm gonna give the whole table to him, and he can give it to you guys.
It's just thick, literally.
I have one.
I don't.
Instead of...
My own changes miss, oh my god.
I'm missing out.
Okay, so eight, eight o'clock, is it right?
Eight o'clock. You said you had a complete spreadsheet auditing all the policies and how old they are and what's missing. Can you send that to us, though? I'd just like to see that. If it's not ready, then that's fine, but...
The spreadsheet in itself, that's all done.
That's the first step.
That's the first step that I did, so that way I knew what was missing.
Got the lay of the land.
Can you base it on, can you base it on the online and the book?
Yes.
Yeah, I did the Google first, and then I, you know, I took my book and I went, okay.
Well, you should also get Jeanette's book. Hers is probably the best in most countries. I'm serious. She writes on it.
Well, basically what I gave was I said, okay...
When she's on the committee.
I've got them all. MSA, this is what I have. What do you have? You're missing all of these. These are required, blah, blah, blah. And then when I sent everything over, she says, oh, and by the way, you need all of these as well. Recommend these.
Yep.
In long-term, they will be online, but there will be a hard copy in the central office.
I've been, as I'm reviewing them, I have been printing them and putting them in sleeves, so I have a real decent copy.
Good.
Are we looking at this one?
This is for new business?
We haven't got there, but we'll be there in a minute. Unfinished business, there is none, so we'll move on to new business. And in new business, we have the second reading of the undesignated fund balance policy.
But just, I'm sorry, where are we on the agenda?
Ten.
Just a quick question, are we, celebration of learning, do we have any planned for future?
It's on my list.
It's gotta be a long list.
There's just some other stuff we're gonna get.
Yeah, I got, I just don't wanna lose it.
No, I'm a big believer in kids being...
It was really nice last year, and it was a culture shift.
Trish mentioned, somebody mentioned today something about music, possibly celebration.
The concerts, no.
One of the concerts is scheduled for the same night as the school board meeting. It's a 6:30 concert. Travis expects it to be a half hour. Because of all the basketball and other things, he couldn't find, and having his accompaniment, he was troubled finding a different night. So my question would be, can we change times? Can we work around it?
This, this would be the next...
Yeah, we could start our meeting at five and then be able to head over.
We'd love for you to come to the concert.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we started our regular meeting like an hour early, then we could go to the concert.
Is that December ninth?
December ninth. Somebody will make a motion that on December ninth, we start our meeting at five o'clock.
I make a motion to start our December ninth meeting at five o'clock.
Second.
Okay. And then to, all those in favor? The purpose being to give us the opportunity to go and observe the concert, go to the concert and enjoy and whatever. Is this all grades?
No. This is half. The following will be the other week.
Which half is this? The little half or the big half?
I think it's the little half. Let me, let me check for you.
And why is she doing that? Would like comment, Friday you had an assembly and the performed for veterans.
Yes. Yes, the assembly on Friday was a tribute to Veterans Day. And Tyler Potem is heading up the history club, and so it was members of the history club celebrating relatives, actually, that were veterans, as well as Mr. LeBrand, who's a on-staff veteran. It was really nicely done, with some pictures and some sharing. And the corps sang the Star Spangled Banner. It's very nicely done.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you have it taped?
K to three. K to three is the December ninth one. So it's the little ones.
K to three, okay. It'll be fine.
Yes. I appreciate the accommodation.
The little ones are just...
Okay. Let's move on now. Ready to move on to new business? Second reading of undesignated fund balance. We had a chance to look it over. I know the only request that I had made to Kim was to change that last, the last paragraph. It had said that if we needed to go to the town, it was by referendum, and it really just needs a town meeting. So that's been changed.
And Mary had a couple of changes too, which I may...
And this is an area where we went to that meeting the other day for HR and et cetera. We got free advice.
On this, on this particular policy. Mary, what were the things that you were looking at that you wanted changed?
I don't remember. It was too long ago.
Well, I changed them and then I...
This has all the changes that we...
If I had my email, I could tell you.
I think one was a typo.
I'm always with the typos.
Yeah, I can't, I actually don't. I do have the email through, but I don't remember it.
Well, are you ready to vote to accept this fund balance policy as a policy?
I just wanna say, this, we talked about this last year during the budget, and I'm glad we have this. I think this is really, really good. So thank you for the time spent on this, all of you.
Somebody had a bad spell.
I know.
What?
A little kid out there had a bad spell.
They're jumping up and down off the railing and...
Just to let you know, Kevin, there'll be some parts of the budget process where we're trying to address some of this.
That's what I, that's why I'm excited. It'll help.
That'll be good.
And just with the transparency and everything, it'll be great.
So I made a motion on the Acton School Department Fund Balanceee Policy for the second reading.
I'll make a motion to accept the Acton School Department Fund Balanceee Policy.
I'll second.
Moved by Jeanette, seconded by Mary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Where's this gonna fit in the policy?
The acceptance of this...
Under the financial section.
The acceptance, this means that it is, it becomes, it becomes a policy. Second reading, acceptance becomes a policy.
You mean, what is the title?
What's the letters to this?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to ask her, I'm gonna call Charlotte and find out exactly what she should have, ours should have the numbers or letters up in the right.
Yep. Just for clarification, this is undesignated fund balance, but nowhere in the motion does it say undesignated. Does that matter? Oh, no, it's fund balance policy.
Yeah. And now the term is unassigned, correct?
Well, number five is unassigned.
Yeah. But undesig, yeah.
Overall, all five of them are undesignated fund balanceee, but number five, which is like the balance of everything left, is unassigned.
And what, what five does is make unassigned and undesignated synonymous.
Okay. This time I'll extend a motion to go into executive session as per MRS A four oh five six.
So move.
Did we talk about this?
No.
Just read it.
Next meeting.
Somebody make the motion.
I moved.
Mary?
Second.
Do I have a seconded? All in favor?